We're all agreeing in order, we can stand for the pleasure allegiance. A pleasure allegiance to the retiring United States of America and to the Robert, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Honor, please take a roll call with members present.
I'm here.
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 So, where we left off last time is we've gotten through all of our second readings and we're down to, although we want to revisit a few of those, I think, we're down to this particular increase request and then a discussion of available funds for raises. So, I don't know how you guys want to start, but Vicki, why don't we start off right now with how much money we have that we can spend left in general fund?
In the general fund, we're showing 604,091.
So roughly 600 grand. Have you moved the 100,000 back to health insurance? We're going to put another 100,000 on the general fund health insurance. Have we done that yet?
No, we did not.
Let's just take this, write that down.
So now, amount to increase 504, 691.
Okay. I know we wanted to talk about some budgets particular, and I think one that I wanted to talk about was the clerk's budget. Let's pull that up. So, did she have, she had some specific increase requests, correct? We moved some of her stuff around. We moved the payment for the election equipment and the maintenance, although the maintenance is slightly lower than she thought, into the seated funds. Maintenance, she had it at about 150 something, but now it's down to 126, she told me today.
And then clerk, we're talking about during elections, not for...
We're talking about the entire clerk. We're going to go through all of it. Everything on the books? So that, just so you know, that, and that's not so important for this, but for the seated, it didn't turn out to be 150 something for maintenance, it was 126, is what I'm telling you. And then we talked a little bit about her perpetuation fund, so bring that up real quick.
Do you want the funds down?
I want, I want the start of the year, the finish of the year, or, you know, year to date, so we can see what's coming out of that. There wasn't much.
What we're doing, the beginning balance of this year was 504, 500.
And what's it now?
620, 426.
And what are we spending, what are we paying for to that right now? The prior clerk had sort of let it sit for some reason.
Right. Last year's budget, for example, was about 74,000, and this year's was cut down to only 70,000. So, the current clerk is not spending much out of this budget, and...
Nor did the last.
That's correct. Even though the budget was approved higher, there was a budget...
Dan, what was advertised for this year?
Do I?
What did we advertise?
Yes. For this budget, we advertised about 50,000. So, if you're going to go above that, you can make the budget decision today and then come back in January for the additional appropriations. We advertise all budget ties, budget space.
So you advertised at 50,000, so we could comfortably move 50,000 into this?
I can get that in there.
Now, we have some restrictions with the perpetuation fund. It has to have to do, it has to have something to do with keeping of the records, maintenance of the records, that sort of thing, right, Earl?
Case management system, preservation of records, improvement of record-keeping systems and equipment, but we consider the clerk's role in general as primarily maintaining records. It's a pretty broad authorization.
Yeah. We'd want to stay away from probably the elections and things like that going in there, but certainly her. So, if we moved 100 grand down in there, which I'm not saying that's what we're going to do, we would have to come back in January and do an appropriation, depending on what it was, we're not going to get our appropriation approved until April?
No, that's not true. The state changed the additional appropriation rules, and this is one of the funds that we don't need to wait on.
Oh, good.
So you could approve it, and we could post it that night.
All right, even better.
How much is coming in?
Well, we started at 507, and we're at 620 now.
Is that for the whole year, 100 grand for the year?
So there's a lot coming in this. So if we wanted to reduce the general fund budget and push something down into this, that would be an awesome thing to do.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yeah.
Move hourly, I mean, what are you looking for?
Yeah, let's pull up the clerk's budget and see what we want to pull down.
Hourly, contractual...
Well, yeah, for one thing...
Salaries.
She's going to use hourly alone.
Yeah, but if we push it down in, she's going to use it either way. It's just a question of where, where the money pulls from.
The biggest category is salaries.
Yeah. Well, Vicki, you and I talked about earlier, this earlier today, did you have any suggestions? Anything to jump out at you?
Well, in looking at the salary ordinance, she had several deputies that are considered records. I don't know if that would meet the definition, and they get currently...
Is there one?
One is 35, 358, or two are at 36, 991.
Should we move three of those down?
Two or three, just two.
125.
Dan? You're up.
125 would give us four years at the present burn rate.
It's not burning.
Well, what I'm saying, we're safe at minimum four years.
So you guys have the clerk's budget up in front of you. So there's two, yeah, there's two, there's two deputy records, that would be 70, 70-some thousand with, would we push the benefits down too, Vicki? Where are those coming from?
Well, that would be your question. Right now, I tend first, we're coming out of the general fund.
If we pushed it all down.
Okay.
Why don't we just leave a number and let them just knock it down?
Well, I'm trying to avoid splitting salaries between budgets. I'm trying to, because I hate that, but we have to, we have to.
Either way, it's still, it's still excellent. The math is going to work out perfect.
No, but maybe we just do. So if we move the two records, records deputies, let's start with that. Let's just move the two records deputies down and see what that does.
Your question?
And healthcare. We're going to move, move the healthcare too.
15,000 of her hourly.
I don't see where you're seeing the 36. What I got from this is 35, 358. There's two.
Yeah, but it's maintenance, but give the whole thing.
The clerk may use any money in the perpetuation fund for the following purposes: the preservation of records, the improvement of record-keeping systems and equipment, and case management.
Equipment. That maintenance.
Do you agree with her?
It's arguable. I mean, I, a lot of it's going to depend on how, what the state board of account says. I mean, it's open to a...
Preservation of records, the improvement of record...
But I'm not disagreeing with you, Jessica, at all. I just, I, you...
Well, you should be. We hire you. The case management, the case management system.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty...
I mean, that's pretty broad.
It's pretty broad.
Yeah, we're moving some down. Yeah, but you're not, that's only one. There's also the improvement of record-keeping systems and maintenance of records and all that stuff, so you're just, you're just quoting one. You're just quoting one, and there's several there. What do you guys want to do? We used to have, we used to have salaries out of here.
There are three counties that do have, three comparable counties that do have salaries out of the perpetuation fund. That doesn't mean that it's going to be approved, but there are counties, I think, is it Allen County, was it Allen County, I think, Vicki, that... I, I, it's, it's, I'm not, Jessica, I'm not disagreeing with you, it's, it's...
How much is the coordinator position? Hold on, Jessica, hold on, hold on, Jessica, hold on, hold on.
I believe it's that 38,072 for the records coordinator.
So that's how much?
38,072.
All right, and then how much is the hourly?
So far, what it appears at, that's 25,000.
We cut it, that's right, yeah.
So we just move the 25,000 down, and we move the 38,000. What does that do?
38,072, and you run on to move by this person there?
Right. Let's try that. Mm-hmm.
Let's make a move.
Dan, Dan?
72.
Dan?
What?
How many people work in records?
Ask her. What was that amount again, Vicki? 72?
72,000, 150.
So I guess it's 72,000. Anything else, Jessica? How many people work in records? Four, five? With the director? We could move all the hourly down and a certain sum of salaries. Right now, we're at 72, 160.
With two people.
No, that's one. Jessica, please.
One, one per hour?
That's the one coordinator and the hourly. Right? I think we can grab more, but let's start with that. Let's use, let's go with the 72, 160 for now. You guys okay with that?
I'll see that through.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, you got that, Vicki?
Start.
No, that's what I put in for the insurance. So we were looking at as much as we can, because we started with 504, 690. They had to pick us up another 72,000, 160. Turn over to 576, 577. You got that, Vicki?
Are we moving to healthcare now?
Do what?
Are we moving to healthcare now?
Good.
I mean, if we're moving, if I can...
Yeah, we're moving just one person, yeah. How much are we budgeting per person?
17,388.
Did you add that in there?
No, but we can reduce, yeah, we can reduce it from the life medical insurance in the general fund.
How much are you going to reduce? 17?
Yeah, 17,388.
So now that takes us to?
3,100.
Yeah, about 90,000, give or take. That was our goal. Right?
Yeah.
Do you have dinner? You want a pizza? What's going on there, Vicki? What's that?
We're just putting out the numbers.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Well, I wonder if it stays up, because we're going to keep it running total.
We move 80 or 90.
That's the easiest one in the front.
So now we're, are we looking at what we have wiggle room now?
Yes, tell me where.
We just gained about 100,000, now we're back up to 592, 592, 236.
All right, that's pretty cool.
And that excludes 700,000 in the general fund that we just put back in.
Okay.
Less than 173.
We got it. Pull the prosecutor's budget real quick. 4D, start with 4D.
This is the prosecutor's 4D general.
And then what is in their non-general fund? 4D, what do they call it? User fee or whatever. I want to know where we started the year at and what we have now. In the non-general fund, what?
This is the general...
Incentive, yeah.
And we started the year with about 345,000, 703, and we're at 369,000.
Go back to the prosecutor's 4D general.
4D general.
Yeah, I'd like to try to push 50,000 dollars down into that.
Okay.
So what suggestions do we have to do? It's got to be from 4D, because it's got, that's the requirement for the...
There are currently two deputy prosecutors that are already being paid out of this fund in addition to the general fund.
Yeah.
So one option is just to reduce their share to the general fund...
What would that be?
And increase it to the 8895.
What do you guys think about that idea?
How much?
I'll see.
What's the dollar amount?
Once again, this will need to come back for an additional appropriation because we didn't advertise the high close, but...
Is this one that we don't have to wait?
And this is one we don't have to wait.
Because it's non-general.
What's the dollar amount?
So to you guys, I just threw up 50,000, but that's...
Well, it means the two salaries she's talking about.
She's saying we just push enough down to make it 50,000.
Oh, I see, okay.
And the two people are, the salary ordinance is called deputy prosecutors, they're already being hardly paid.
What's left of them in here, in the general fund? How much?
You mean after we move that 50,000?
No, forget about the 50,000. Right now, what's left in the general fund for these? You said already some are being paid from the incentive fund. What, what's left of them?
The two people, they're being paid 120,000 total.
Out of the general fund?
The two, two individuals. One is getting paid 70,000, and one is getting paid about 50,000.
Out of the general fund?
Correct.
They said part of them was...
And then they are also getting 7,280 over one out of the 8895, and the other one is getting just over 2,000 out of the 8895.
So the one's 70,000?
So...
70-some thousand, we just push that salary down? Can we do that?
70,000.
Yeah. I mean, this fund will support it. Is there an issue there?
Yeah, one entirely.
The only issue is the statute, and I think it would...
You can't supplant, yeah, you can't.
Supplement versus supplant. I think if you look at the entirety of the 4D budget, if you're just taking those two salaries, it's supplementing, it's not supplanting, but maybe...
What would be our safest bet?
Probably a larger portion that would be...
Each one? So if we pull 30,000 each down?
Why don't we do half of each one? 35 and 25, this is the 60.
He said 30 of each.
So take half of each one and push them down.
So, 120...
I mean, crap again. Yeah. Grab sheet, we'll see where it comes.
To save her own.
There's a pretty good chance this will pass. Hey, I'm not the one giving minimal advice here.
Sounds like no one.
Might be embarrassing, might be embarrassing.
It's been good for three years. We're going to get a raise.
Yeah.
I thought returning fugitives got moved to the sheriff.
I have to ask Dave.
We've got 10,000 in there.
I thought maybe, for some reason, there was a reason to leave it back.
Right, 10,000 connection.
Where do you see that at?
It was just up there.
I don't know.
I just go down.
We're going to ask Vicki.
It was zero for 19, then it was 10 for 20.
Right. I was wrong.
I don't have it crossed off.
Are we looking, are we there?
I thought we moved all of the shares budget.
But I didn't make any work on it.
35, 60.
If you look at the...
Yeah. I got a real good, listen, again, I'm not the one with my law license.
Yeah, that before too, I don't, I don't hear you.
What are you looking at, Bob?
Well, you got 10,000 for the... Returning fugitives, I thought we moved all that to the sheriff. Yeah, that's the... It's zero for this year.
Did that slide bias?
Account number 325.
I don't know. Did we move it all to the sheriff?
I thought we did. They took that over.
He brought that up, Gary brought that up when he was...
Was Gary here?
No.
Well, ask the sheriff.
Yeah, do you receive it?
Yeah.
Sheriff, didn't you take over the fugitives?
It was only like 6,000 dollars.
Right, it was 6,000 dollars.
I guess he's questioning why there's still 10,000 dollars in the returning fugitive fund of the general fund 4D prosecutor.
Shouldn't be, there we go.
Let's take it out. We can take the 10,000 out, returning fugitives. Right.
Details.
130.
Details.
Mike?
Details. 10,000 there, 10,000 there, pretty soon you're talking about real money.
So we good? So now where are we at?
In terms of the variable result, 673,835.
Getting better.
We're getting there.
Keep going up, gets better.
So before we go any further, I guess maybe this would be an awesome time to...
Take a break?
To ask Vicki, um, what, so our aim, obviously, is to try to get some money to give some raises to our employees. So we had all kinds of different scenarios as to what that might cost us. Vicki, do you want to refresh our memory on, at least starting with percentage raises, what's that look like, before we get into all these other requests? Just so we have a goal in mind.
2% across the board?
So I'll get that, get that down.
471 dollars and 471, 445. Now, this also includes...
How about 3%?
3% is 707,168.
Okay.
Far enough.
Not too terribly far off, but we haven't gotten into all these other things yet. Okay. Um, any other, just general budget things we wanted to talk about before we get into these specific requests?
Are we going to talk about the recorder?
Bob, we'll talk about whatever you want.
Well, no, I'm just asking a question, Mr. President.
Yeah, why not, Bob?
How much is in the recorder's perpetuation fund?
A lot.
Any other questions, Bob? Recorder here?
Yes. So to be clear, we cannot mandate something, we can't just arbitrarily push things into this budget. This is a creature of statute with statutory restrictions, so we've been able to avoid this discussion with the recorder. In the past, they've, we've had an agreement or a proposal from the recorder that allowed us to have money coming out of the perpetuation fund, vis a vis some salaries. There was some concern a few years back that this fund might dry up, so the recorder came to us and asked us to move salaries back out of it, which we did, but then the fee structure changed. So this fund did not dry up, in fact, it took a 180-degree turn and his... I know the recorder had some thoughts on what he wanted to do or, you know, plans for the office with some of this money, but that's where we're at. So our only authority that I think we could do, if we were so inclined, and I'm not sure we are, but if we wanted to, would be to reduce his general fund and see if he wants to come back with a proposal from perpetuation.
Is he here? Is he here?
He's here.
Is he here?
Yeah.
You got any thoughts, Chuck?
Come on, Dave.
Yeah?
This one's kind of a hot ticket item, man.
I've contacted several people on the board, trying to fit people in to talk, and I've talked to a couple of you. We do have some projects, and this is part of what I was gonna be talking to you about on Thursday, so I don't have all the papers in front of me, so...
So what I would suggest is this, Chuck. I would suggest you kind of give us kind of an overview.
A brief.
Yeah, a brief overview.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a very brief.
And then, 'cause Thursday's the big, and we have to have the numbers to Vicki in anticipation of Thursday.
Understood. Okay. Here's, the biggest one is that last year, there was no real projects done with that fund, for a couple reasons that some of you are privy to, some of the more personal reasons, but that was not, those funds were not touched primarily, I guess, for the new cor- or the, excuse me, the new recorder coming in, not to have projects that I was gonna be doing.
The new recorder, correct?
Yes. At that time, at that time. Okay, so I'm sorry. So we do have several projects that we have planned. Obviously, that depends on your guys' decision on this, but some of you have been into the office, you've smelled the microfiche, which is starting to decay, which is something by law, and I know microfiche sounds like it's archaic, but by law, we are supposed to keep records of that and update it as needed. That's probably going to be about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar project to replace that. Some of the books, I know Sylvia's seen the books that need attention, and I've got a quote that you guys were supposed to have seen, I think, by now, maybe, maybe not. We should have it down to Joy by now. If not, I'll have it to you tomorrow. But you were supposed to have it on Monday. That project for getting those old, old books that, once again, by Indiana code, we have to keep those updated, and it's kind of like museum stuff. You have to pay money to keep everything in good condition. We got that quote back, and that's nine hundred thousand. So that's gonna be a multi-year project that we're gonna be using that fund for, and it will be granted on what you guys determine, but once we start that project, that fund is going to be dwindled down.
Okay, so...
That's the short version.
Right, so the nine hundred thousand is a multi-year. How about the five hundred thousand you're talking about? Is that multi-year, or is that a one-time capital?
That will be over the course of a year. The book binding is gonna take several years to get that done.
See, I don't think anybody, and I haven't drilled down the detailed conversations on this because I was kind of waiting to see how it all called out, but I don't think anybody has suggested that we deplete this fund or try to take all of your money or any of that kind of business.
That has not happened.
Yeah. I think what we were thinking about, or at least what has been intimated by Bob at meetings, was to allocate some or give a little relief to the general fund out of this one. I think that was the, that was the notion. How much of that relief, I don't know. But that's the idea.
Right.
Now, Bob, I don't wanna speak for you and the rest of the group, so I want you guys to chime in here if you've got questions for the recorder.
I have a question.
Yes.
The vinegar-smelling files that you showed me, all of those files don't smell like that. I mean, could you do that in portions?
We are gonna be doing it in, like a three-year project.
Pardon?
It'll be about a three-year project.
That's...
I'm sorry, no.
Yeah.
That's not, that'll be done probably in one swoop, and there's some of those that are not going to be duplicated. You're correct in what you're thinking. Some of those are not going to. We only had a quote for replacing the ones that are starting to show the decay.
How old were the documents?
We have documents, I think we showed Sylvia, that we've got documents going back to like eighteen seventy.
Yeah.
And, you know, everything's supposed to be on microfiche. Once again, I, every time I bring up microfiche, I, in my head, I think it's archaic, but it's what the state code says that we have to have all the records on, so...
Do we have all the records on microfiche at least?
We are almost caught up to that. That's part of, do you remember when I came to the, one of the council meetings this previous year and started signing, or, a program called CrowdForce? I, we're, we're, we've got about ten years left that we're still working on.
Dan?
So we are...
Yes, Sylvia?
I have a question. How much does this perpetuation fund bring in? Like, is it like an acre? How much, you know?
So Chuck, why don't you just speak to that for a second?
Sure. That fund brings in, it depends on how much real estate's being sold, and that's an ebb and flow type thing, and of course, right now, it's fantastic. So I would guess, right now, we probably just brought in around forty thousand dollars for the month. Now, some of that money is going towards like the surveyor's office and stuff like that, because that, when that law was passed for that perpetuation fund, some of that money that gets paid for, those documents like mortgage fees and deeds, they get split up between different departments. There's an education fund that the auditors in charge of.
Vicki, what's coming out of this fund right now?
Good, good point.
So there's different avenues that that money goes to other departments.
So far this month, thirty fifty thousand five, forty-five has been brought in, and about fifteen fifty-five has been brought in. So far...
A year, a hundred and seventy.
Used to say three hundred and forty-eight, nine oh eight being brought in, expended a hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty.
So what I'm hearing, I...
Great question.
Oh, I'm glad.
Okay, this round of replacing this microfiche.
Yes.
How, if I'm saying it, fish, dish, whatever.
Yeah.
You're the future.
Yeah.
Microfiche.
That'll be a one-time in my lifetime.
Wait, oh, we're not replacing all the files though, right?
No, there's, yeah, and there's probably seventy-five percent of them that we are going to be replacing.
Okay, so I guess my question, what there would be is, the people that did this, did they look at the other files and say, "You're good for another ten years after this"?
Well, the only way to contact them when we start noticing the...
Vinegar smell?
Yeah, the vinegar smell to it, so...
How old is that existing microfil- microfiche, whatever?
You could call it either one. It's, I can't answer that, Bob, I'm sorry.
I mean, is it twenty-five years old, fifty years old, or?
It's...
It's been going on since I've been here.
Right.
It takes a while for it to...
Yeah, and we're continually, like, if you brought in a mortgage document, it's gonna be put on microfiche right away. One of the things that I came in front of you guys for this year was to get the previous two years caught up putting on microfiche. I think that was like thirty thousand dollars that we got caught up, 'cause the past two years it hadn't been done. So we got that caught up.
What's your, what's, Bob, what's your suggestion? You've been, it's gonna be in your mind for a month.
It will forever, but I think we need to let the office hold to see when he's willing to donate, because he's taken eighteen thousand dollars in salaries out of it now, and that was okay, so...
Okay. The question be, okay, I can respond to that then. First of all, that wasn't me that did that, that was a previous request.
You have the office holding on, you had eighteen thousand dollars in salaries out of your budget.
Right, and I did leave it there.
It's about the crowd, so it's a value too.
And I did leave that there. I mean, obviously, we could reduce the workers' pay. The reason that that was put in there back then, some of you probably remember this, at that time, the recorder's office, John did not feel that the workers in the office were getting paid the same as what other similar offices were in the building, and at that point in time, the county could not afford raises. So he did use that money to bring our office staff up to what the other office staff was. Now, my goal was to let the...
Yeah, to add more to the story.
Okay.
So, that's not exactly...
And I'm not, I wasn't there when that all happened, this is what's being conveyed to me. So if there's more to it, I'd love to hear it.
Well, I think that this fund was, and rightfully so. I mean, the recorder came to us and said, "I want to give these particular special raises, I'm having this person do more, and this person do more." And we said, "Now, hold on a minute, we're only given this kind of raises, we have money for," and he said, "Well, it's so str- it's so important to me, pay for it out of this fund," and there was more coming out of this fund. So it was, go to this fund, it won't cost the general fund, I'll be able to give my employees raises, which is great, that's what we wanted to see.
Right.
But then, again, later on, rightfully so at the time, this fund is drying up, you've gotta pull these people back out, and we gotta do it in baby steps, or big giant baby steps at that point.
Yeah.
And we ourselves off it because it's a matter of time before this is zero.
So it was going down at one point.
It was going down. So he went, no, it was, yeah, that was accurate.
Okay.
And then, things have changed, and it's now a little more flush. So that's kind of the history. And I'm not saying that changes your answer, but I wanted to be clear that it was a fund that was brought up to give these raises that you wanted to give, and I think that's awesome, but now here we are.
Right, and I, when I look at that law, and I know you emailed it out to everybody, so everybody got a chance to look at that, to me, it doesn't look like that's what it's intended for, and you guys can have a different interpretation, and I can't argue that. It's, it is what it is. It's a little bit vague, and I will one-hundred percent admit that, okay? Not gonna fight anybody on that.
Well, to be honest, it was vague enough when we wanted to have salaries come out of it. Now, it's not vague enough.
Well, anyway, I sent those, yeah, and I sent the law to everybody because I wanted, there was some discussion about it. I was expecting Harold to give us an opinion on it, and I wanted everybody to see it, so they knew what they were talking about.
Okay. Well, did you, do you have any, I mean, I don't know if you guys want me to ask this now, I mean, do you have an opinion on it?
You're certainly welcome to. Answer it to the degree that you think it's not an attorney-client privilege problem.
I do have an opinion about it. I, the law's pretty clear, in my opinion, that the monies in the fund are supposed to be used only for a particular purpose, you know, maintaining records.
Sounds like the clerk.
And it's, well, very similar, yeah. And, but the other statute, there's a separate statute that permits the recorder to come to the council and request to pay monies out of that fund for, for general fund. And the council ultimately, separate and apart from the perpetuation fund, administers and has the power over the other funds that the recorder has. And so I think that ultimately, the power of the purse is with the council, and if the council wants to draw down the other funds, separate and apart from the perpetuation fund, the council can do that. So I think it's sort of six of one, half dozen of the other. I mean, I think the statute is clear and allows for what is being, you know, hinted at.
That's fine, that's fine.
Can I, can I jump in here?
Sure.
Your, your five hundred thousand dollar project.
Yes.
Should we, and I'm just saying, as a group, between us and you, should you budget two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for record-keeping? Because you're not gonna do all the money or anyone. And everyone's a three-year project, should there be X amount of dollars budgeted every year, except for these big, huge projects, every five years or seven years or whatever, should you allot, should we allot three hundred thousand dollars a year so you can keep the stuff updated? Because I've been down there since the year two thousand, we've had the same conversation every year, updating the records, trying to, you know, the paper, the...
Yeah, but I think this guy was more sounding like a capital project. He's sounding more like that.
But it's not, it's never a capital project, it's never-ending. It's never gonna stop. You have books in the eighteen hundreds you gotta do something with.
Yeah, but he's getting, he's taking care of the vinegar-smelling ones.
Well, okay, that's the, that's the microfiche, but, yeah, the books...
What do the books smell like?
They're old.
They smell old. They are very old books, and their pages are brittle, and that's, started the, the ink is starting to fade on those, so...
So...
But I mean, it's never, he's never going to catch up.
There's always gonna be work to do.
Right, he should allot X amount of dollars a year to, to his projects, instead of any, you know, once it's...
Yeah, but he's proposing to take them out of the perpetuation.
Correct.
We don't really have to allot anything.
Okay, then we could allot the rest out of the general fund.
I mean, he, that's the problem with this. You can't really say, we're only gonna, you know, he's, the perpetuation fund is a creature of statute in and of itself. Our authority is over the general fund.
Correct.
For his office. That's not true of all offices, but for his office, we have, as Harold indicated, the power of the purse strings with respect to his general fund.
I just thought Santa Claus would come up here early for Christmas and throw something out of the table that would, you know, help the general fund.
Well, I went back and looked at his budget last year, and he budgeted forty thousand more than he used in that perpetuation fund. So there is some rollover that could have been project-used last year.
He's bringing in already a month.
So there is, there is some leeway there on that money that we already budgeted towards that.
Chuck, is there a reason why in the two thousand twenty budget, those projects aren't included or aren't addressed?
That, it's just basically because the way the law's written, and we can use that money without having it budgeted. We can just do those projects and then pay for them ourselves. Technically, as far as I have been able to find out, and I've talked to our state president for the Recorders Association, we're the only county that actually comes in front of the council for these types of projects. Most of the time, what the other counties do is they just do it and send the bill on to the auditor's office and have it come out of the perpetuation fund. And that's not, we wanted to have complete transparency with you guys. I believe in what John had started with coming in front of you guys and having you take a look at everything. I think that's important. I still think every county should do it that way. So...
Yeah, and there's, and the other side of that coin, and we appreciate that, and like I said, we've had a good working relationship with the recorder's office. The other side of that coin is, when those times come that this fund was running dry, that relationship paid off nicely when we were juicing the general fund to not lay people off or not reduce salaries. So it works, so yes. So we do have a good working relationship with the recorder's office, and it has worked out great. Much like we had a wonderful working relationship with the coroner's office for many years.
Thank you.
In the spirit of cooperation, then, what do you guys, so what's the suggestion here? We gotta get this thing going.
I'm really not even on the schedule for today, so...
Nobody really is.
Okay, nope, so this is fine?
We're just, this is us?
He could, he could have told us.
All right, so do, do you want to...
We're gonna come up with a figure, Chuck.
You wanna figure that I'm, okay.
So we're gonna create an ordinance, correct?
What would have to happen is, is...
You already have to, as it turns out. I didn't wanna go down that road too far, but we'll talk about that, kind of procedure of it.
Okay.
One-on-one, but yeah.
Okay.
We are, there's already things we need to be doing, but even if we didn't make any changes, we probably could do that, reading that statute.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
So, if that's not gonna be something new, but, we can address this tonight, we cannot address this tonight. We have Thursday for final reading. My intention wasn't to bring the recorder up here, I didn't even know he was gonna be here, frankly, but what do you guys wanna do?
Chuck, you made your poison.
You're probably not gonna like my poison.
I know you don't like it, but, you know...
I mean, I just look at my projects that I have, and I guess what I was going to propose to you guys is, you know, if you guys let me get through with these two projects, then I can start absorbing salaries. I have no problem doing that, but I would like to get done what my job is supposed to entail. And once I do that, I can absorb those salaries.
You know, Chuck, and I'm sure you can see it from the council's perspective. And I support the idea of transparency and the collaborative effort between the Recorder's Office and us. And I think some of the struggle that people are having is that, you know, for 2020, you're saying, you requested two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of perpetuation fund. Yet, there's looming five hundred thousand dollar project, looming nine hundred thousand dollar project, all from council's perspective. We look at the perpetuation fund, and it's flush. It's got more money than any other, any other county we have in the county. And we are under pressure with the general fund in terms of if we are going to be in a position to offer raises, you know, for the county employees. And so, I think the ultimate question is, is what, if anything, are you, in the spirit of cooperation, what, if anything, are you willing to say, for this upcoming year, we would be able to absorb in the perpetuation fund? I don't know if that's a fair summary. I think, I think it's, for the two projects, so in the spirit of transparency, I mean, I know with the five hundred thousand dollar project, nine hundred thousand dollar project, and I know you're not under any obligation to apparently share the details of those, or how, because you can spend that money out of your perpetuation fund. But I think it'd be helpful, or maybe we'd better understand what it's all about, if there was a plan to say, "This is what absolutely needs to be done. This is what's going to be done in 2020. This is what's going to be done in," I mean...
Can I hand that to you?
...expenditure.
Can I get that to you tomorrow?
To me, it'd be helpful. But, I mean, I, that's just trying to understand...
I come in front of you on Thursday, so I...
Everybody comes in front of us on Thursday. It's our final reading. We're talking about the regular meeting we're having before.
And I guess, so I guess I'm saying, I'll throw that out there, and to have whatever information, I think certainly couldn't hurt. But then, let's say, is there, and if you're steadfast on not wanting to put anything into the perpetuation fund, then...
Yeah, let me think about this overnight and see what I can do for you guys.
Thank you.
Okay?
All right. I would consider it until Thursday to make a final decision.
Thank you.
Vicky, do you understand the timing of that? What if we came back and said, "We're going to, you're going to reduce the general fund fifty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, seventy thousand, whatever the number was, twenty thousand?" When would you need to know? If we told you that Thursday, is that too late?
We can do it. As you probably noticed, we take the time in figuring out the...
Yeah.
Well, we may just have to stay here Thursday till we're done. It's not yet. So, okay. I'll get you that information tomorrow. That'll be helpful.
Yeah, I got you. That's perfect. Okay, cool. That's good.
Good enough.
Thanks, Chuck.
All right.
Thanks, Chuck.
Yep.
Now, the sheriff had some requests, and I think that, in meeting with the sheriff, we revised those requests. Love it, correct, Vicky?
Yes.
And it stands, it's not an impact to the general fund, his request?
Yes.
You guys get that? All right, I thought we had this worked out. What's... All right, hold on. Vicky, where, so, yes, no, maybe? Are we good then?
So, the answer is yes. All of the changes that they are proposing, like part-time and full-time assistance, or moving part of the jail, mentioning salary, changing the bond, it has net effects on the general fund as long as we change the two items.
Do you guys have any questions about the specific request that the sheriff provided us, the result of the moving the shipment, the chairs around the jail?
The only question I have is, I'd like to see Sheriff Franco say yes. That's what I agree with.
Just nod your head. I think Sylvia's saying that the sheriff is assured, understanding that and agreeing to that.
Yes. It's my proposal, but with the understanding that we have to put it in the general fund next year, or the following year, for our cameras.
How much is that?
Fifty-eight thousand.
Or find some other place for it that year. Any, okay, any other questions specific to his request? We're going to go through all these tonight, so... Anybody have any questions about, what do you guys want to do with this?
Get a motion?
Yeah, let's get a motion of one way or the other, as long as we all have a handle on his requests.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the budget as it's been...
Resubmitted?
Yes.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. That takes care of this here. So, auditor, you had some specific requests, and I asked you to move them all down to your non-reverting fund. What do you think about that?
Considering cooperation, I would agree with that, with one exception. I'm asking for a, to clarify, to revolve a wage parity issue in the office. And these are deputy positions who are paid out of the general fund. So I'm proposing to eliminate the hourly rate in the general fund, so that effect is zero.
Okay. Do you understand Vicky's suggestion?
Yes.
Yep.
So we're going to move her requested increases down into her non-reverting fund, with the exception of equalizing pay and reducing hourly due salary. So make that change.
Motion to approve those.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That takes care of the auditor. We talked about the sheriff.
We love the spirit of cooperation.
Yes.
It's far so good. Which other budgets, where do you guys want to go now? So, Vicky threw, brought one out for us here that we haven't addressed, the special requests. Because we've addressed some of these on the second reading. So our JDC, we have not. Correct?
No, and you asked me to remind you about that.
And then you didn't need to, because I remember it on my own. So, how's that for you? So, let's talk about JDC for a second. You can, in case someone has questions.
Hi?
What, what questions do we have for juvenile attention? Why don't you refresh everyone's memory as to what you're asking for? It's a net fifty-two hundred roughly dollars increase?
Yeah. So, starting off, the one big thing that I want to talk about is increasing my hourly rate. Like I said last week, the problem that I'm having is just staff turnover. We start detention officers off at thirteen dollars an hour, and that's really not a legitimate rate. Our officers, obviously, are in dangerous situations where we have to deal with very severe amounts of children. They, all of our DOs either have their degree or they're working on their degree, and I'm finished with that. So the first thing I'd like to do is to move the rate from thirteen dollars an hour, starting to sixteen, I'm sorry, thirteen to sixteen dollars, to sixteen to nineteen dollars an hour, as well as increase my cook as well, because I really can't keep cooks either. Our starting pay is ten dollars and thirty-five cents, up to twelve dollars an hour. And I'd like to increase that from twelve dollars to twelve dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour.
Your cooks, just real quick, are these people that just heat stuff up, or are these actually, they prepare meals?
They actually prepare meals.
So it's like a chef, kind of a...
Sure. We do have to prepare meals in regard to the Department of Education guidelines. We prepare, we prepare meals a day. For our kids, we don't bring that in. We actually do the shopping and preparing of meals and menus and all of that. Actually, we have a pretty good menu. They're welcome to come and try it out.
So is your request to increase the line item, or just the hourly rate?
I want to increase the rate, but I also want to increase the hourly rate about twenty-five thousand. That's probably just dropping the bucket at this point. I think actually, it would be more than that, but at least it'll be a good start. The problem that I'm having again is because I cannot pay people enough. We're training them, and I have to train our detention officers eighty hours initially for them to even be on the floor by themselves. By the time they finish the eighty hours, they're leaving. Because they're making thirteen dollars an hour, and it's not enough. They could go somewhere else where they aren't going to get hit, or punched, or have to deal with de-escalating kids all day. So at least if I could increase the hourly rate, at least twenty-five thousand, that will help immensely in regard to...
So for your budget, Allison, are you suggesting to go to two hundred thousand?
Yes.
How much we spend this year?
We've got to pay for that increase in rate.
Problem without. I'm actually coming in front of you all on Thursday, and actually ask for an additional, because again, we have such big turnover.
Increase in the hourly rate, maybe increase in the hourly rate.
I hope, I hope so.
So, what do you guys think about that?
Allison, what's the typical, or the average number of juveniles you have in detention?
It depends on the day. Today, I have fifteen. It could go up to twenty. We could hold up to twenty-four. So it just depends on the day, the time of the year, and what's going on.
Do we still have out-of-county kids?
Yes, we do. And I did increase their per diem, I believe, last year.
So you're asking for twenty-five thousand in your hourly, you're also asking for some wage increase, correct?
I am. I am. I am asking for a wage increase for one of my detention officers. That is our primary home detention officer. I'm asking for an increase up to forty thousand ninety-three for him. He currently makes his...
So that's almost a 10%. That's about a 10% little more raise.
Yeah. This man has been with us for, between, being within other agency and our center, has been around for about twenty years. He's out in the field almost every day. He's on call to police. He's on call to us. He not only goes out into the field and performs over two thousand home visits a year, he also comes back to the center and works partnership. If we need to pull him off the road...
So what's your, what's your, what's your, you want to do it together, or neither, or one at a time?
How long has he been doing that, Allison?
Sounds like twenty years.
Probably close to twenty years. Between, we used to have partnerships with the Family New Services Bureau. He used to work for them through a grant. And then he moved over to us as a full-time detention officer. So he's been there for a very long time.
And is there something different about this year versus previous years, in terms of increase in the salary rate?
No, you know what? Honestly, it was something that I was looking over, our overall look for our department in regards to some of our titles and positions. And that's something else that I had asked for, is to change some of that as well. A lot of things that we were talking about before, we've changed a lot with our Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. We've really increased all alternatives. We've increased the amount of time we've been out in the community over the last few years. So it's something I've been thinking about in the long run, but I just didn't, I just didn't pull the trigger on it, frankly.
I want to circle back to the out-of-county rate. What is it?
One forty.
When, you raised it last year. What was it before that?
One ten.
Any chance we can move some of this down into the codes?
I can definitely, for the increase for the home detention officer, I can present the code for sure.
How's, how is codes, how's that running?
We did an analysis, and we did, it's bringing in, bringing in about, what's about fifty-five, seventy a year, maybe? JDC code, code, so far this year, probably about eighty-five.
So, yeah, actually. So what I'm, I'm going to suggest that we give her her two requested increases out of codes.
Can I credit something with that, though, Dan?
Yes.
Actually, because we referred the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, that is also, tends to increase the amount of kids that we have coming through, and it will decrease the amount of kids that we'd be getting.
Yeah, so let's look at it this way. This is kind of a experiment. We're going to move those things, if the board is inclined to do so, into codes. Let's see how the increased hourly rate does for your retention. And listen, if we get here and it's October, we're a little shy of the load. I think we're coming in October this year anyway. So we'll address it. We're not going to leave you without staff.
I'm also going to...
That way, you get what you're asking for, and you can just...
That's fine. As long as I could come back and, and I'll try to...
Always come back.
Of course. Of course, I'm also an increase, two hundred dollar increase on my maintenance agreement for copiers. If you got new copier, I do need that, for sure.
I got, I got some more questions. I'll second it.
All right, now, a second.
Would the, would the motion be inclined to throw the two hundred dollars for a copy of the maintenance on it?
Yes, I would.
All right. How about you, Bob? Second concur on that?
What is your average?
Bob, Bob.
Yes, I'm, I find it.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah. I'll give you the two hundred bucks. What is your average count over the course of a year?
An average count? Average daily population?
Yes.
We're looking about fourteen.
And how many that are out of county?
Just depends on the day, Bob. I don't know. Like, today, I probably have three.
Because that, that...
And all of those funds, all of the contracts that I have with those counties goes directly into the general fund. It does not go into my subsidy.
And as we accept the out-of-county folks, is that a wash for us, or do we...
I'm getting to that. I mean, based on my simple math, because I'm a simple person, it's three or four hundred dollars every day to run the place, right?
Probably, yeah, easily.
Okay. So, we have a motion in the second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Excellent. And just real quick, because I did ask about the restructuring of the titles. Are we okay with all of that? Like I said, a lot of our old titles were archaic, and we've been really trying to revamp things like our, the therapists you see calling it...
Did it cost us any money?
It does not.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, what you called. Call my name, sandwich, for all I care, as long as it costs anything.
The song that next year will come back to states, says you've got to pay the title.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Take care. We're going to take a break real quick, for about five minutes.
No.
You're talking about, what, the, the...
Oh, and I...
You want to answer for anything?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I, I didn't want to... I guess that general fund...
Right.
Now, it's the rub on the horse, is, he should come, to be a question, or he should pay out of the perpetuation fund, and to provide a mandate of, but, like, I think you're right. I mean, if you could, you know, do a nine-month project next year, well, you know, staying there, right? Versus, it's going to be over. You're asking, you know what I mean? I think it's going to always be...
Too great.
You do great.
Yeah, yeah, talked to her today. She's doing awesome. She's got two days of fall break, today and tomorrow.
Oh.
So she's out camping.
Oh.
At the Santo somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, so, so where is she now?
She's at Arizona State.
Arizona State, okay, that's what I thought. We, our church takes a couple guys every year to, it's one of those hot canyons in Utah, and they, it's like a five-day hike up to the black mountain. And I signed up this year, I paid for it, and then I just came up screaming, and I can't go. And I, and I was so bummed.
Right, right.
The, just because I, I know, I've been out... So I ended, I ended up giving it to them, said, hey, just, you know, give it to someone who maybe could be, you know, you know. And, uh, so I'm just gonna, I'm, they're getting ready to leave in like ten weeks, and it's like, ah.
Yeah. So I'll let you guys.
Oh, my gosh.
You just, no one will make you.
Uh. It's okay, it's okay. It's still, it's, it's, it's probably crossing the highway.
Yeah. It's fun. So.
Someone has done, you know, how that's like. Those are mandatory raises, we can't do it.
Should we drive him in the office?
Oh.
Who else can I get?
First of all, how much more do you got to pay?
Yeah. Yeah, why not?
No, I can't.
I'm, I'm just.
That's, that's, no, no. She was talking about moving that, uh, yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm only, I'm only expecting my home.
You're right. They said two hundred.
You know. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I'm trying to come back to China, like, oh, it's a Thursday. And I've been.
You know, you're.
He doesn't have any.
But then he's just here tonight.
Well, he's talking, you know that. I'm beginning to feel that it shouldn't be.
No, don't, because we need your input. Okay, who else do you think is?
You should, I'm a nice, well, really, I'm a good person.
I think, I think.
I'd like to think that.
Oh, of course.
You can wear that. You feel, I'm a good person. I'm, 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 I'm.
Well, I don't know. I should take.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm glad. The dog had the white shirt.
Oh, he's got it.
He went to the county. He was just an elderly guy.
Oh, yeah.
He was losing his mind, right? So this week, I'm just trying to help him, but he was, he was, you know, what, whatever.
You know what, you think we need?
Of course we. What do you mean, why are you telling us? They're twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not?
No, I can't.
I'm, I'm just.
That's, that's, no, no. Uh, she was talking about moving that, uh, yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping, I'm only, I'm only expecting my home.
You're right. They said two hundred.
You know. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I'm trying to come back to China, like, oh, it's a Thursday. And I've been.
You know, you're.
He doesn't have any.
But, but then he's just here tonight.
Well, he's talking, you know that. I'm beginning to feel that it shouldn't be.
No, don't, because we need your input. Okay, who else do you think is?
You should, I'm a nice, well, really, I'm a good person.
Oh, of course.
You can wear that. You feel, I'm a good person. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I don't know. I should take.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm glad. The dog had the white shirt.
Oh, he's got it.
Huh? He went to the county. He was just an elderly guy.
Oh, yeah.
He was losing his mind, right?
Really?
So this week, I'm just trying to help him. I should, I should.
You know what, you think we need?
Of course we. What do you mean, why are you telling us?
No, don't, because we need your input.
Right.
Okay, who else do you think is?
You should, I'm a nice, well, really, I'm a good person.
Oh, of course.
You can wear that. You feel, I'm a good person. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I don't know. I should take.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm glad. The dog had the white shirt.
Oh, he's got it.
Huh? He went to the county. He was just an elderly guy.
Oh, yeah.
He was losing his mind, right? So this week, I'm just trying to help him. I should, I should.
You know what, you think we need?
Of course we.
Of course we.
I'd like to think that.
Oh, of course.
You can wear that. You feel, I'm a good person. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I don't know. I should take.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm glad. The dog had the white shirt.
Oh, he's got it.
Huh? He went to the county. He was just an elderly guy.
Oh, yeah.
He was losing his mind, right?
Oh, yeah.
He was just an elderly guy.
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 Oh, yeah.
He was just losing his mind, right? So this week, I'm just trying to help him. I should, I should. He was, he was, you know, what, whatever.
You know what, you think we need?
Of course we. What do you mean, why are you telling us? They're twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, is this general fund, on a business thing?
Yeah. Yeah, general fund, I mean, special reasons, I'm general fund.
So they're wanting, uh, what's your, I don't, um, trying to get a special, uh, pay or like twenty-two thousand, uh, to pay your.
Yeah. Hello?
Oh, yeah.
It's just, it's just frustrating. What I think it should do is we never go, I mean, it's asking, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't ask for anything. You want to do it? I wouldn't ask for anything. You want to take it out? I trust, I trust her, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not sure. What are you, thousand dollars in wages for probation? That makes you feel good.
Yeah, that's. We, we have to afford, we cannot afford.
Yeah, they're gonna get probation, we don't, we gotta.
Oh, that's bad.
I'm just.
You guys talking about Ricky?
What, you're wrong.
God, I didn't recognize him. I hate to say it, oh, I'm not gonna say it.
What?
She's a fellow.
Yeah.
She's a fellow.
No, I think I'm right now.
Yeah.
What?
I didn't recognize him. I hate to say it, oh, I'm not gonna say it.
What?
She's a fellow.
Yeah.
She's a fellow.
No, I think I'm right now.
Oh, that's bad.
I'm just.
You guys talking about Ricky?
What? You're wrong.
God, I didn't recognize him. I hate to say it, oh, I'm not gonna say it.
What?
She's a fellow.
Yeah.
She's a fellow.
No, I think I'm right now.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
What's the, what's the part? Okay. Okay, let's roll. All right, let's get back to it. Back to this.
Well, say a special request.
Uh-oh. All right. What are?
Well, before we get to that.
Right here.
Okay. So here's where we're at. We've gone through the things that I wanted to talk about and that a couple of the others of you wanted to talk about specific. Are there any other special request increases that anybody wants to talk about?
Only then Dan is survey, surveyors, all right?
Yeah. Talk about the surveyor.
He's got a perpetuation fund. Vicki, what's in there? I mean, he, the reason I'm going to, he's had a spot vacant for ten months. And they've lost a lot of responsibility.
Current cash balance is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven eighty-seven.
They spent eight thousand out of that fund this year?
Uh, uh, wait, no, 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 ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirty.
They bought, uh, two vehicles out of that?
Yeah.
Wasn't it two vehicles this year? So, yeah, there was something with some party chief?
Yeah, I guess that one caught my attention was.
Party chief?
I asked him the other day.
That was my nickname in college.
If he filled that spot, Dan, he's.
Will you see it on video?
Probably.
He said he hasn't.
They've lost a lot of responsibilities with losing MS four, a lot of drainage stuff. I know he did some reorganizing.
So do you, is your suggestion to take the party chief out of his general fund budget and if he wants to fill it, he can come talk to us with his perpetuation fund, non-recurring fund, where that is?
Whatever the job is, but then I, somebody whispered to me, I asked him the other day if it was filled, he said no, ten months.
Been a year almost, isn't it?
Ten months later, somebody said he might have hired a guy today.
I thought it was here.
No, I don't know. I mean, what's the salary for the party chief?
Forty-five thousand nine fifty.
No, we increased that.
That was the one that was vacant?
We did increase that.
I think we increased that, didn't we?
All right, so hold on. So what's, tell me again what's in his non-general fund budget? Start, what did it start with, what's it got now in his perpetuation fund?
It started ninety-three thousand four, four forty-four.
Right.
And the current balance is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven eighty-six.
So what I would suggest is we, I don't know if you hired somebody today or not, Jeremy, but if there's some question about this, if you're thinking maybe he doesn't need this individual in the foreseeable future, take it out of his general fund budget. If he thinks it's something that he absolutely needs, he can come back and make a request out of his perpetuation. He, he's, he's, he's spent eighty-three hundred dollars out of that fund, am I reading that right, Vicki?
I'm sorry.
He spent eighty-three hundred dollars out of that fund this year?
No, that's just the current one.
He spent ninety-one thousand.
Ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirty, so far this year.
But those were buying some vehicles, right? Isn't that?
We gave him approved vehicles.
Vehicles that he didn't have somebody that even sit in the seat for ten months. So I, they just said, lost a lot of responsibility to the.
Make a suggestion, Jeremy, I threw one out there, what do you think?
I'm making a motion to put that salary, pull that salary from.
General fund?
Fund and move it to the perpetuation or just leave it.
Second. Did you advertise the perpetuation fund high enough where we could just move it down in there?
We'll do the additional, same thing. Do it in January.
Since that's a, since the perpetuation fund is non-general fund, can we do an additional in January if we need to? Sorry.
It may do. Oh, yes, um, they got the budget. It's one forty-five, seven sixty-four, and we added like two hundred and thirty.
We got plenty of room.
If he doesn't, and if he can't do it, he might be down.
We'll, we'll.
We got plenty of room.
So can I get a motion to move that salary down to perpetuation fund then?
You did.
Do you want to do? Well, it was to just cut it out. Do you want to make it to move it down to perpetuation?
Yeah.
Second concur? Any other discussion?
I mean, I would like, yeah, to have some discussion with him whether he even needs a position for ten months.
Well, but he can revisit that, right?
Well, I think what Jeremy's telling you is maybe we don't move it anywhere.
Just take it out all the.
I know he just hired somebody for a day, but I mean, being employed by the county for a day might be a good thing back.
Let's not do that.
He's always come back before.
I, I'm just, a lot of the responsibilities been shipped.
He's gotta be able to pay the individual if you hired him. I'm, I'm motioning we move it to the.
He's got it for the rest of this year.
Well, let's tell him right before Christmas. Can we just take the one motion?
All right. There is a motion in the second on the floor. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Down here, you vote, Jeremy. We just moved it down.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that helps the general fund a shade, right?
Whatever that salary was.
Want to do some?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask, is the coroner here?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that in a second.
Oh, okay.
Not there yet.
We're gonna keep it running, totally.
Well, how much is the possibility of it being moved?
I know, it's on it.
We need two, engineers, surveyors, not.
We're waiting on a total.
Discuss that when he's here, that might be better.
Maybe.
Is that the advertised salary, forty-five thousand?
Hmm, how about this? Have the Mr. Fund.
Who's this tax adjustment? I'm waiting for who to give me, what's the, what's the number now, is that adjustment?
Oh.
Yeah, what's, I'll find out. Okay. Uh, I believe, Sylvia, you were getting ready to ask about the coroner's request?
Yes, um, that's, uh.
Seven twenty-one, I think we might want to go home right now.
Well, it's a sixty-two thousand dollar hit, I'd believe, on the general fund and, um.
Yeah, it looks like it's more like a seventy, sixty-seven thousand, if I'm reading it correct. Sixty-seven, six ninety-one.
I'm, I was just wondering, uh, how are they gonna charge hourly? If, if they're on call that day, do they get twenty-four hours to pay or?
I think I need to help with that or Cindy explain what your proposal is, if you would.
And this is Bob Bird, my chief deputy coroner. So he's gonna help me answer all your questions. Okay, um, what was your question, Sylvia?
Um, my question was, you're asking for them to be put hourly. And my question was, is, if they're on call that day, how many hours are they going to acquire or be paid for?
All of my deputies are on twelve-hour call shifts. They can be called out on a scene or possibly not. Right now, they are all paid on salary. It is gonna be a little bit of an increase, but, um, right now, I'm working on a skeleton crew, no pun intended, but, um, I need.
Halloween, why not?
I need some wiggle room here to hire some extra deputies.
Been a year almost, didn't it?
Ten months later, somebody said he might have hired a guy today.
I thought it was here.
No, I don't know. I mean, what's the salary for the party chief?
Forty-five thousand nine fifty-six.
No, we increased that.
That was the one that was vacant?
We did increase that.
I think we increased that, didn't we?
All right, so hold on. What, so what's, tell me again what's in his non-general fund budget? Start with, what's he got now in his perpetuation fund?
It started ninety-three thousand four, four forty-four.
Right.
And the current balance is one hundred twenty-seven thousand seven eighty-six.
So what I would suggest is we, I don't know if you hired somebody today or not, Jeremy, but if there's some question about this, if you're thinking maybe he doesn't need this individual in the foreseeable future, take it out of his general fund budget. If he thinks it's something that he absolutely needs, he can come back and make a request out of his perpetuation.
He, he's, he's spent eighty-three hundred dollars out of that fund, am I reading that right, Vicky?
I'm sorry.
He spent eighty-three hundred dollars out of that fund this year?
No, that's just the current one.
He spent ninety-one thousand?
Ninety-one thousand eight hundred three, so far this year.
But those were buying some vehicles, right? Isn't that?
We gave him approved vehicles.
Vehicles that he didn't have, somebody that even sit in the seat for ten months. So I, they just said, lost a lot of responsibility to the store.
Make a suggestion, Jeremy, I threw one out there, what do you think?
I'm making a motion to put that salary, pull that salary from...
General fund?
...fund and move it to the perpetuation or just leave it.
Second, did you advertise the perpetuation fund high enough where we could just move it down in there?
We'll do the additional, same thing, do it in January.
Since that's a, since the perpetuation fund is non-general fund, can we do an additional in January if we need to? Sorry.
Oh, yes, um, they got the budget for perpetuation. One forty-five, seven sixty-four, and we added like two hundred and thirty.
We got plenty of room.
If he doesn't, and if he can't do it, he might be down.
We'll, we'll try.
We got plenty of room.
So can I get a motion to move that salary down to perpetuation fund then?
You did.
Do you want to do? Well, it was to just cut it out. Do you want to make it to move it down to perpetuation?
Yeah.
Second concur? Any other discussion?
I mean, I would like, yeah, to have some discussion with him whether he even needs a position for ten months.
Well, but he can revisit that, right?
Well, I think what Jeremy's telling you is maybe we don't move it anywhere.
Just take it out all the way.
I know he just hired somebody for a day, but I mean, being employed by the county for a day might be a good thing back.
Let's not do that.
He's always come back before.
I, I'm just, a lot of the responsibilities been shipped.
He's got to be able to pay the individual if you hired him. I'm, I'm motioning we move it to the...
He's got it for the rest of this year.
Well, let's tell him right before Christmas.
Can we just take the one motion?
There is a motion, a second on the floor, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Down here, you vote, Jeremy. We just moved it down.
All in favor, signify by the saying aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, so that helps the general fund a shade, right?
Whatever that salary was.
Want to do some...
I'd like to, I'd like to ask, is the coroner here?
Yeah, we're going to get to that in a second.
Oh, okay.
Not there yet.
We're going to keep it running, totally.
Well, how much is the possibility of it being moved?
I know, it's on the...
We need two, engineer surveyors, not...
We're waiting on a total.
Discuss that when he's here, that might be better.
Maybe.
Is that the advertised salary, forty-five thousand?
Hmm, how about this? Have the Mr. Fund...
Who's this tax adjustment? I'm waiting for who to give me, what's the, what's the number now, is that adjustment?
Yeah, what's the...
Uh, I believe Sylvia, you were getting ready to ask about the coroner's request?
Yes, um, that's a...
Seven twenty-one, I think we might want to go home right now.
Well, it's a sixty-two thousand dollar hit I'd leave on the general fund and, um...
Yeah, it looks like it's more like a seventy, sixty-seven thousand if I'm reading it correct. Sixty-seven, six ninety-one.
I'm, I was just wondering, uh, how are they going to charge hourly? If, if they're on call that day, do they get twenty-four hours of pay or...
I think I need to help with that or Cindy explain what your proposal is if you would.
And this is Bob Bird, my chief deputy coroner. So he's going to help me answer all your questions. Okay, um, what was your question, Sylvia?
Um, my question was, you're asking for them to be put hourly. And my question was, is, if they're on call that day, how many hours are they going to acquire or be paid for?
All of my deputies are on twelve-hour call shifts. They can be called out on a scene or possibly not. Um, right now, they are all paid on salary. Um, it is going to be a little bit of an increase, but, um, right now, I'm working on a skeleton crew, no pun intended, but, um, I need...
Halloween, why not?
I need some wiggle room here to hire some extra deputies.
Really?
Because if there's a sickness, and we've had to deal with that not too long ago, there was a deputy that, um, was out of commission for a couple of weeks, then my other deputies have to step in and take the extra shifts. And they still only get paid so much money a year. They don't get compensated for that extra time that they have to...
Right. I can remember, of course, it doesn't matter, but county's getting bigger, there's, and busier. And I could see where your department would get busier.
And the reason...
I have a lot of empathy for that, but it's just never been that way. And if, if we do this, we want to make sure that...
Well, I guess I'm a little confused. If, if, if Dan is on his twelve-hour shift, we're going to pay him whether he's called out or not?
Yes.
Yes, because you have to be in Porter County and you have to be available to go out on a call in a certain amount of time. So you're kind of limited a little bit. I'm getting used to actually going to the grocery store now while I'm on call, because it's, it's, you, yeah, you're just limited to the timeframe that you need to get, go out on that call.
So how are you going, how are you going to pay, what are we talking about paying Dan for twelve hours?
Just for the record, I don't actually work for the coroner. I'm prepared.
I mean, how much are you going to pay Dan in The Wizard of Oz?
Twelve hours of pay? It would be, it would, yeah, we have to pay the deputies on-call pay. We have to pay them for, for staying in the county for...
Well, how much? What are we talking about?
I'm, I'm proposing fifteen dollars an hour, because right now, they don't make ten dollars an hour. If you, if you average out their salary pay, they make approximately nine dollars and twenty-two cents an hour.
So we're going to pay Dan a hundred and eighty dollars a day and we're going to pay the night guy a hundred and eighty dollars?
Correct. Twenty-four hours is day coverage.
Yeah, I figured that out.
Because it's part-time for everyone, so everybody works full-time jobs. Our problem has been recruiting and retaining county people since two thousand and six. We just lost another individual, so we've lost twenty-three people since, uh, two thousand and six.
How many do you have now?
Nine. Well, right now, we have seven, because we just lost a deputy.
So, so we've lost twenty-three people since oh-six?
Yeah, they have come and gone. Uh, and the big thing is because of compensation.
It was all based on salary?
A lot of it, yeah.
We haven't addressed this before?
You know, I, I've been the chief now for four, I've had the privilege of being the chief for four coroners. And over that time, when the county has raised the salaries for all the county employees, the part-time deputy coroners, county got left behind. That's why we're averaging nine twenty-two an hour. And to be able to...
Well, someone should have noticed the loss of personnel, that's a lot of people that's lost since oh-six.
I think there's always been a high turnover though.
It's a tough job.
And, and I agree with you, it is.
So, what, what are you, what are you guys going to do with this?
So Cindy, explain a little bit about the advantage of getting away from the salary and going to the hourly.
Going to the hourly, there are only so many hours in the year. There are only so many twelve-hour shifts in the year. I would have wiggle room to hire maybe three to five more deputies. They're not going to take up any more hours. If one month, I have a couple deputies that, say, want to go on vacation, then the other deputies can step in and they're not going to get any paid, they're not going to get paid any more for any less, because there's, there's only so many hours that we cover.
Are we, are we talking about fifteen dollars an hour for the entire year?
Yes.
When they're working.
Well, somebody's always working.
Correct.
Somebody, right.
So Dan, what are you guys going to do with this? Let's move this thing along one way or the other.
As a quick example, I was on the call yesterday, I had three deaths. Suicide, where a gentleman shot himself twice in the head.
Twice?
Twice in the head. I had a homeless woman who lives in her car die of suspected heroin overdose, and an elderly gentleman die alone. Now, all today, I've been typing, I've been on the phone with funeral homes, pathologists, family physicians, uh, and tomorrow at six AM, we've got two autopsies going. Now, I haven't gotten paid for anything for today or tomorrow, that's gratis.
So what's, again, what's your pleasure with this?
What is, what is your hourly now?
I've got a question, you're right, Bob, because just under the, that's a hundred and thirty-one thousand...
Hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars?
Four hundred dollars a year if we're working three hundred and sixty-five days.
Well, somebody's on call all, all the time.
So even the request is, yeah.
Bring up the coroner's budget real quick. Move this thing off the desk.
And then, and Cindy, with your proposed change, you said there was not a, not a significant additional dollar amount involved, but...
There is.
Yeah, there is.
Is that sixty-eight thousand dollars actually?
Which is probably inaccurate.
She got eighty thousand in the salary now.
Well, that's why I want to bring up the general fund, or her budget, I mean to say. Let's look at what's going on here.
This is the current general, uh, general fund budget.
And you understand her request?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, Vicky? So does her request impact the general fund, sixty-seven thousand, six ninety-one? Because the math doesn't seem to jive, so that's the question.
Yeah.
That's based on the estimate, because...
It seems I could do more.
She's already paid eighty.
Quick question, so if I'm understanding this, if there's no deaths for, say, a week, then people are getting paid and they're not doing anything, because they're just on call?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but they are, we're doing that with the salary also.
Right, so let's, well, let's get it one piece at a time. It will cost us.
It's fifty grand more.
What do you got first, Vicky? What's, what's your...
So in her, um, proposal, the proposed hourly rate, she had an estimate of a hundred and thirty-three thousand seven oh-four. And again, it's estimated.
Right.
And then the current annual salary as budgeted is eighty thousand eight twenty-three.
Fifty thousand more.
Fifty-three thousand dollars.
So...
She gets before, um...
Overtime allowance?
Yeah. Overtime allowance.
Well, that was my next question, are they subject to overtime if somebody works four days out of a week?
No, what was that again?
Well, somebody worked, if, if, if somebody, Dan happened to work four days out of a week at forty-eight hours, is he entitled to overtime?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Hours were, um, like what I'm doing tomorrow, I'll be in these autopsies starting at six AM. I'm not getting paid for that, that with device and compensation, two of those deputies that are required to be there with the police investigators.
So this, so the hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, or roughly, is not an accurate number?
If there's overtime, right.
Correct.
There'd be more than that.
How many deaths have we had this year? I'm just curious.
Well, can I get, I want to get, before we, I want to get a good answer to my question for the other. So what exactly is the impact, as you understand it, to the general fund with their request?
We're coming up with sixty-seven, six ninety-one, that does include the increase if I can prove, and that might be part of it.
That does not include overtime. That does not include overtime.
Well, it includes a ten thousand dollar overtime allowance.
And, and the overtime allowance, if we get, um, if we get multiple deaths at the same time, we have to call other deputies in to cover the calls, because we can't be at two places at one time. And that's happened to me already, that's happened many times. It doesn't happen all the time, but I just need some way to compensate a second or a third deputy coming out on a day that they're actually not on call.
All right. Now can we get, can I get a motion of some sort? Or no motion, and then it's just...
I, I don't know if this whole thing has to be revised, changed, whatever. I mean, I understand, I understand her dilemma, but by the same token, we're paying Dan, I'm sorry, we'll switch to Jeremy, we're paying Jeremy twelve hours.
I'm not working with this guy. He's on nights. We're paying him twelve hours of pay for doing nothing. Should we go to an on-call, so much a call?
That's what you're doing now, aren't you?
No, they're salaried.
Oh, okay, you're right. Yeah, right, right now, we're salaried.
Should this, should this whole thing be thrown out and just be done, should, should Jeremy get...
We don't really have time now. I mean, we're, if we're going to, if we're going to make a decision on raises tonight...
Should I be what, Bob?
We need to...
So much a call. If you're not called out, you don't get anything.
On your screen was eighteen expenditures. There was twenty-one thousand dollars left.
Yeah, but I think the point is, if I'm on call, I have to be available. I mean, they're, they're paying me to stay in the county to, yeah, not be in Lake County, La Porte County, not be in the bar or something, you know?
I know that nurses, uh, they don't get paid their full amount of pay, just as throwing out an example, for being on call. I don't think they do that, might have changed. It's been a while since I've been on the, been at that point. But they do, they don't get their full, you know, amount of salary, but if they go in, then they do.
Hey, Dan?
Yes.
It averaged about twenty thousand plus per year that they haven't used out of their budget. Could we approve forty thousand of that instead of the sixty-seven?
Whatever you guys want to do.
Can, can, can we expand this conversation? Should there be full-time?
What?
Full-time people instead of deputies, part-time.
So if we start talking about insurance and benefits and...
Yeah.
We're talking about unlimited overtime. It's always going to end up...
It's unlimited, because...
It will be unlimited, because during the next year, she's going to come in and say, I've dug up my overtime and I need more, because I had to call two people out, we had three deaths, whatever, whatever, whatever.
Not if we keep it the way it is now.
Correct.
That's right.
All right, so...
Just to throw out a motion, I'll say motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny on the floor, the request, is there a second?
Was, was there?
I'll second it for discussion going tonight.
Was, was there some additional consideration, Cindy, in terms of, uh, perhaps increasing the salary of the deputies that you currently have in terms of trying to retain and keep and...
That's, yeah, that's a possibility. But I, I again need, I, I would, in a, in a perfect coroner world, I would like at least three more deputies, room to hire them, because all, all of my deputies now have full-time job commitments.
How did it work the last couple, the last, the last eight years, how did it work, Dan?
A lot of uncompensated times, okay. Everybody gets put in, some people will work more, others will work less, if you get paid the same amount.
Yeah, but it's not really, I get what you're saying, but your salary, so it's not really uncompensated. You're, you do have compensation, although the hours to get that compensation might be excessive.
It's drastic.
Yeah. So, um, what, uh, okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor, is there any other discussion?
Well, it is disturbing that the hourly rate is around nine dollars an hour.
Mm-hmm, for what we have to do? Yeah. I just think they just serve more than ten dollars.
I guess, I guess that's where Bob was going, what percentage of the time are you actually doing the job? And, and I think that's where Bob, that was the question, right?
Well, I'm a little concerned, I mean, here's the thing, I, I do understand what they're saying. If we're, if we're going to this hourly thing, if we're going to this, this notion of, you know, this unknown overtime amounts and, you might be back in June saying it's not enough. You might be, you might be back.
I understand that.
And that, that's what concerns me.
And, well, and...
So what I would suggest is, I'm not going to vote for this, I don't know what the others are going to do, but I'm not going to vote for this now, because there's too many unknowns for me. What I would suggest is, if it passes, fine, you can go with what they do, but if it doesn't pass, is then I, doesn't pass, I would suggest very quickly, you come up with another thought or another idea. As opposed to doing, if it's not working, you don't think the way it's going, maybe we need to find something else. I don't know what that would be, maybe there isn't one, maybe just a little bit. Um, that's just my thoughts, but I don't speak for the group.
Because the hang-up, Cindy, of course, is the additional sixty-seven thousand dollars to the general fund.
Right, that's, that's the whole thing.
So can I get a roll call, please?
Is this to deny or approve?
To deny. Can I, there's a motion, a second to deny this request, can I get a roll call, Vicky?
Councilwoman Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Papera?
Yes.
Councilmember Bega?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Sten?
Yes.
And Councilmember what?
Yes.
Now, in terms of additional proposals that Cindy may be able to come up with?
Yes, please.
Why don't, who's, who's the coroner's layers on me, I'm one of them.
Yep.
So here's what I would suggest.
Mm-hmm.
Call Mike and I tomorrow, and let's talk about other possibilities quickly.
Okay.
If there are some, and then we can maybe get some information out to the group.
I think, I think part of the, the discussion initially was to try to make it more equitable for the deputies, because some of them work and they get the call or multiple calls and others don't, and those days are good.
That's all right.
But I don't know if there's another, if there's any other way that other counties handle that, or to try to make it more equitable, because what we're saying here is that everybody's just going to get more, which would be good and, and, uh, something, something to strive for, but it's still going to, some are still going to get called out more often than others, and some are going to, uh...
It'll be the same thing.
Be easy, I mean, so they're...
Okay, so they're... Well, I'm going to echo what Sylvia said, should we lower the, the salary than increase to per-call rate?
That, that would be a... It's one possibility, yeah.
Or come up with a per-call rate to make it more equitable and not have it quite so rich on an hourly basis for when you're not actually working.
Okay.
And then just real quick, but I, if you can handle the amount of hours they actually worked in a year, that might be helpful. So like each individual, a thousand hours, or one worked two hundred hours, but I know maybe weekends are more busy, is it, is one day more busy than another day in particular?
That's hard, because unfortunately, we work when someone dies.
All right, so here's the thing, just think it over and let's, let's, you've got kind of a mission now, I guess.
Thank you, guys, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll revisit this. All right, so...
Thank you.
Um, are there any other of these requests, Vicky, that you know that were part of a restructure or things that we needed to do, or things that we already addressed, that, like the commissioner's request for the three custodians, that had something to do with switching people from here to there? Is there something we need to do with that?
Um, but this was his favorite. He made it neutral with the idea that these...
Custodians?
I do, and I, is this something we need to do or something that, or they're just asking us to do as an extra?
Didn't affect the general fund.
I just don't want to leave anything that we have to come back quickly and address Thursday, oh my gosh, we forgot about that, and that's an inflationary item, or you guys approved that earlier.
Said they were taking it out of...
We did animal shelter, we did veterans, did sheriff.
They were just taking Pike and Prentiss out of the general fund.
Dan, I, as long as we're talking about commissioners, I also have something I'd like to ask about. The other day, we, we voted on wildlife management?
Yes.
And if we, I thought that the budget had been reinstated, and however, I found out that they actually, they can only function on what they get donated, and, uh, they, what we did the other day by voting for that, we allowed them to spend up to twenty-four thousand two hundred, but it's their money. And they're trying to develop, uh, over ninety acres, which was given to the county of several years ago. And I know it doesn't mean anything, except I thought it, that I was voting on something that the commissioners had paid for.
Well, the good news is that that vote doesn't really mean anything if we change it to third reading, so if you're thinking that there was something done in error that you want us to revisit...
Well, I'd, I'd like a clarification on that.
Yeah, we need to clear the error.
Need a clarification. Need a clarification.
So we need to, do you understand what she's asking, Vicky?
Yes. We talked about this fund today, the current balance is about eleven thousand dollars. And so the budget is like twenty-four. But we won't let them spend more if their funds will not sustain.
Yeah, but they need money to make any, you know, to keep going. Plus it, I think...
No, you have questions, I want to make sure you get your answers. I think it was in the commissioner's budget at one time.
It was, it was, definitely.
So are you suggesting, what are you suggesting Sylvia?
I am suggesting that the commissioners put twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars in that budget and they can't spend more than that.
So, Vicky. Where did it come out of?
I would, yeah.
Right now, it's out of their donation fund, it's the fees that they...
Right, so what did we change with our vote?
Nothing. It's just a source of funding.
Didn't change a thing, all we did was paperwork, that doesn't mean anything.
It's a source of funding.
Right.
Yeah, it's a source of funding.
It wasn't the commissioner's budget at one time.
Yes.
Then it got moved out.
When did it move out of the commissioner's budget?
At least three or four years ago. It used to be in CBIT, they got fifty thousand a year. No, it was probably about five years ago.
So are you asking to move it back into the commissioners' lit budget?
Well, I would like that very much, these...
I wonder if we couldn't talk to them and they make up the difference between donations and the twenty-four four that was budgeted.
That would sound good. That would be acceptable.
Do you understand that suggestion, Vicky?
Do you understand it?
Do you understand it, Vicky?
I'm seeing a blank...
Are you aware of this, Vicky?
The chair is looking.
Do you want to increase their budget?
To twenty-four two hundred that we voted on.
And this is the approved budget.
Right.
They don't have the revenue for it.
But there's no money in it.
Right now, they don't.
So, but we approved the budget, it's twenty-four something, if they don't have enough money, they'd have to come back to us and ask for money.
So then they'll be coming before us, you know...
How much do they spend?
Uh, well, what, their budget is exactly what they said that they will spend this year.
Okay, what was the budget this year?
I can't tell you that.
Um, let's talk to the commissioners. Let's talk to the commissioners about that, Sylvia, I'm open to whatever, I'm in it. We'll do whatever, I'll go with whatever you want on this one, Sylvia.
I, I'll tell you what, I vote for that. And I vote for something.
It was all wildlife, I'm with you, I'm with you.
We'll fix it between now and Thursday.
Okay, sounds good.
I can hold on my presidency. All right.
Felicia.
That's true.
Let me add, what's, any others that you, if we don't address it and approve it, it's not getting approved.
That's right.
So I want to leave this, I'm asking you guys again, if there's something you want to address, if we don't address it, it's the same as a deny. Because it hasn't approved it, is there anything else on these requests that you guys want to address?
Well...
There's a couple of non-general fund, the health, did we already do the health department? They've been sitting there politely.
No.
Yeah, we didn't, you're okay, right? You're not happy with your...
Well, this isn't going to be everybody stands up because we're here. It's, no, I asked them. So the question is, amongst the board, is there anything else that anybody wants to address? You've read through all the requests, I just mentioned the health department, I said, hey, maybe we should talk about the health department.
Because you guys represent it.
So your request was to, and we didn't do this yet, did we, Vicky? Your request was some raises, maybe depending on what kind of raises we give, maybe you're not far off the mark. One of your people, you're asking for a five hundred dollar raise, it might be more than that by the time you're done with raises.
By going with what we're going to give.
No. Yeah, come on, just do it. So I just have a specific question, we're going to make this a very specific discussion. You asked for a few specific raises, one of them is five hundred and forty-one dollars. That is for assessor reassessment, right? Or is that, no, it's the assessor, you're helping. You asked for a two thousand dollar raise, I'm at the assessors.
We did, yeah.
Plus the cross-the-board raise.
Plus cross-the-board raise.
But...
And that's probably, probably not going to happen, maybe. It doesn't usually happen, but sometimes. It could happen.
But what I want to say is that in the interest of corporation, we were just going to ask for a two thousand dollar increase for just the one individual, which is the third deputy in disregard of...
Disregard what?
Disregard the first one, which is the second deputy, disregard that.
So, yeah, I mean, it's a non-general fund budget, it's like a motion.
Right, the only thing is the, we take a chance of what we're going to pass might be more than what's...
Well, when we do, here's what I would suggest, this is a whole other discussion, so that we can clarify to the auditor, and when we decide there's going to be a raise, whatever kind of raise it is, we're going to at that time decide.
Either or.
Is it either or or is it one on top of the other? So my suggestion for the motion would be, if you're asking for a two thousand dollar raise for the one deputy, that, if we don't address the, plus the other stuff, it's two thousand dollars.
That's my motion.
Your motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Obviously the same as probation, correct?
Yes. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye.
So that takes care of that. You get that, Vicky, which one?
They might have just lost money.
Yeah, all right, now, is there any other budget that anybody else wants to...
Well...
Address specific? And again, if we don't do it now, it is not getting done. Here's...
Let's talk about EMA.
You want something about EMA? Something about EMA?
Oh.
You want something about EMA?
I think that was something that you brought up, you were right, Sylvia.
Correct.
So the EMA request is a, is it a new position?
Yes.
Or is it an increased position, it's a new position?
He's asked several years in a row.
Yes, he has.
Want to come up, Lance?
Okay, so Jeff?
Well, I know, I think Sylvia probably could...
Well, I have a couple of questions. And I like EMA, you know, I'm there every time you guys have a meeting. But, how many people are employed there now?
So we have myself, the deputy director, there's Greg Icar, who's the hazardous materials team commander, he kind of has his own thing.
So you do have, what, one and a half men under you?
Yeah, and then the admin, so.
There's three full-timers?
No.
Yes. So what we're looking to do is, you know, is, there's been issues in the past with equipment reliability, training of the people who respond, which is our volunteers. They're the ones who are with us on emergency scenes responding and assisting. There, when I started, there was absolutely no training program, there were no SOPs. Half the equipment didn't even work, we made strides to fix that. The equipment, half of it didn't even do what it was supposed to do, so we made modifications. We're now trying to write SOPs that will direct people on how to use the equipment and then also develop a training program to train these EMA volunteers. And there has been nothing. And so what's happening is, the deputy director and myself are trying to do all this and then also worry about things from the fifty thousand foot view, planning for disasters and all the other things that we're supposed to do. And we're not able to do that because we're trying to do all these other things at the same time. And so we're probably even two years away really from being where we want to be. So the reason I'm asking for this position is it would be somebody who could cycle equipment, help develop and deliver training to these volunteers who go to emergency teams that are very dangerous at times and make sure they're trained correctly so that we can take care of the director and deputy director's positions and responsibilities. And we have not always been able to do that, so that's the reason we're asking.
Jeff, Sylvia, I'm not sure, I mean, I know what we're talking about, are you guys talking about both the deputy director?
We started with the additional person.
Additional person too?
That's also a raise request.
In, is that the training director you're asking for? Is that the new position we're talking about?
Watch commander.
He's got two requests in here.
Yeah, there's two requests, one's for the watch commander slash training coordinator, that's one position.
Fifty-two thousand three hundred thirty-seven.
No, sir, it's forty-five thousand and eight dollars.
What am I, what am I...
He wants forty-five.
Oh, the fifty-two is fifty-five.
Plus the seven thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
And the seven thousand dollar increase, it would be, this is just to get that in line with the deputy director, the hazardous materials team commander falls under him in rank, yes, the deputy director makes less than him. And so we're asking for an increase just to get that in the proper line for the chain of command. But also Homeland Security pays half his salary via grants, really, we would be asking for thirty-six to have some, yet refund when we get that grant on half of that seven thousand two hundred.
They don't want to talk about grants.
Your refunds, pardon me, your refunds now, they go in, you've developed a new perpetuation fund? Is that where they're going?
No, no.
I thought they were.
We, are you talking about the donation fund or the district one maintenance fund?
You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, that's a totally separate, that is money that district one, that's used to maintain...
But you were saying that the state or federally you...
Yeah, that's different. So when we get that grant back for half the salaries and we get it, that goes back into the general fund. That goes directly into the general fund.
Is there hazardous assumptions fund?
That goes towards the hazmat team and we're limited on what we can use.
What is that, what's the source of funding for that hazardous?
There's equal injections that, there's fees that come back from that and that's where that money comes from.
How much is in that fund, Vicky?
What fund?
Twelve forty-one. Twelve forty-one. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twelve forty-one.
No. I'll have my vote.
What did you say, Dan, I'm sorry.
No, yes, that's related.
And the EMA grant, that is reimbursement?
They pay half the director's salary, half the deputy director's salary and half of the admin's salary.
But that's not reflected in the budget?
No, it is not.
Wow.
So we put the whole thing in there, but you actually get half that back.
What do you guys want to do with this?
Wait a minute, do we get half back on what we budget or is it a flat amount?
It's half of the base salary for that position. So if the, if one of the salaries, for example, be forty-eight thousand dollars a year, you get twenty-four back once that grant is reimbursed, which is half the salary.
So who are we getting reimbursed on, you?
It comes from Homeland Security to the state.
Right, right, but...
Comes here and then it goes in.
Director, assistant director and admin.
All right.
He said, what, director, assistant director, administrative assistant?
Yes.
All the salaries are getting reimbursed?
For director, deputy director and the admin. And that's by statute.
So we got two requests in front of us, we've kicked this round a little bit. We've got a new position and a raise request and I would like to know, by way of a motion, what this board wants to do.
New position, would that also be?
No, it's not, it's just those three positions.
They pay for the administrative assistant?
Jeff, Sylvia, you guys brought it up, what are you doing?
Well, the new position, it won't be reimbursed by Homeland Security.
No, ma'am. No, they will only do those three and by those titles.
Um, I think the motion's denied.
Which one or both?
Both.
There's a motion on the floor to deny the requests, is there a second to that? I'll second for discussion, although we've had quite a bit, any other discussion?
I still want to clarify, they will reimburse half of the administrative assistant, but not half of the training director?
No.
There's logic to that, I guess.
Let me for you.
Yeah.
Let's get a roll call on this one.
And this is to deny?
To deny.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Paparazzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Sten?
Yes.
Councilmember Levin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of EMA. Well, recycling has a request.
What did you say, Dan?
What did you say?
Recycling has a request.
Soil and water? Soil and water?
And solid water?
Who was that, who that was, soil and water?
They got a raise last year.
Recycling?
Soil and water?
No, recycling.
This is recycling.
I think we did recycle.
Any others, I mean, we've got, come on down.
Hi there.
Hi there, I didn't see you all back there.
I really didn't either.
No, I'm just messing with you, you're good. It was a bad, it was a tense moment for all of us. So, all right, what have we got?
Um, we're just looking for one request, we're just trying to bring up our education outreach pay. She's a licensed teacher and she's not making, she's just underfunded. So we're just trying to bring her pay up about seven thousand?
And this is the non-general fund budget?
Correct.
So that makes it, you?
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the general fund or the county funds and that's... How much is she making right now?
Her current, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
By the way, I want to tell you, welcome.
Thank you.
Porter County.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Week one.
Another way to start, huh?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so...
I'll make the motion to do thirty-five hundred dollars in the following year she can come back.
She makes thirty-eight now, thirty-eight, almost thirty-nine now.
I don't know, I'm telling, thirty-five hundred dollars.
No, I'm angry.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry, I don't know how you guys do this.
You make the motion, that's half the...
Half the request.
Come back next year and phase it in, she's been here a week.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Was that... Is this a year-round position?
Yes. She's been on staff about five years.
And she's a licensed teacher?
She is a licensed teacher in high demand, her schedule is currently booked. She has four days available until April, excuse me, until January, she has scheduled on high demand.
Is there a particular reason or method to come up with that forty-six thousand?
Yep, we looked at the, we compared Port County, what, Porter County and Lake County and their salaries range between thirty-seven and fifty. And the fifty, being on high, that is a licensed teacher. So we did an average of that and just came up with the number in the, also knowing that with this increase, she would not be eligible for a raise as well, so just looking at that as a motion.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any other discussion?
Just to point out something, I know it's not general fund, but it's taxpayers' dollars and we just denied EMA, basically the same exact raise, thirty-five hundred dollars because the other thirty-five hundred was reimbursed, so, that's all, just a point.
Sorry. Maybe it wasn't the other one general fund, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, this is non-guar...
Well, I understand, no, but you make a point, you make a point, Jeremy, you may have swayed me right there. You may have, I'm not sure.
Pretty sure.
I want to see how the vote goes.
Call written first.
Yeah.
I'll just abstain. Vicky, as president of the council, I'm instructing you to call me last. She can't be there. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So it passed. You raised it? You did, man. No, I wanted, I wanted to go for the seven thousand. So licensed teachers? I mean, they came over to forty-six thousand?
She deserved it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thirty-five hundred. Okay, any others? So I want to make sure I understand the commissioners, Vicky, this business of the custodian, they had a request for additional custodian, but how does that tie into...
They're moving...
I'm all about moving the money and reducing the general fund, but I'm not understanding, so that, I want to make sure we understand what we did.
They're switching the groundskeeper and the facilities engineer.
So are we reducing staff by, if we just quit right now? Would we be reducing staff, did they eliminate someone from somewhere else?
So they're kind of reorganizing?
Yeah, so if we, let me try again, so if we stop right now, would we be reducing staff or just not approving additional staff? Did we take money from somewhere else from a position that they want to put over here for a different position? Did we approve a reduction to the general fund, taking money by eliminating a position that anticipated us using elsewhere? If that answer is no, I'm done, it's not, not, they've done it before, that's the answer, then we're done.
I think, are you saying...
I don't want to, I don't want to come back on Thursday and you say, oh my goodness gracious, you reduced the general fund for the commissioners because they did away with this position, but you didn't put it over here and it's got to be over there.
It's going to cost more.
I don't believe that that's what they were doing. I have to go back and look at it. But I thought that they were moving around the position to reduce the salary in one.
But it, it says we're going to be, and it says we're going to be increasing the, uh, general fund.
Which I'm not inclined to do. Okay. Vicky, while you're figuring that out, we already approved the veterans' request, right?
Increased by dollar.
I think we did when we were here and he was in front of us.
Increase from seventeen dollars. I did not think he did, but if.
I thought we did, but if we didn't, I think we should.
Listen there.
You guys understand with veterans, he had a dollar request?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I thought we did that before, but I'm glad that you clarified that. Okay.
And we also, um, when we were going back, uh, you approved that increase for the animal shelter for the hourly, but we didn't think that you approved the rate. Um, if you did, could you, if you didn't, if you did, just confirm that you wanted that rate to go up.
What was the rate?
Say that again, Vicky, I'm sorry.
From animal shelter, uh, they had.
Where's animal shelter? Come on. What do you think we did? I don't, I don't think we did, because I think Bob questioned a lot of things and. Bob doesn't like little furry creatures and.
He's got a can.
Which is odd, because Bob's kind of a furry creature. Uh, would you copy this, Tony?
That could be taken wrong one.
Bob, what did you think we did with this budget? You have some questions and concerns, but did you think we? I thought we, I thought we given the ability to raise wages, but not the total dollar amount.
I thought we did up to fifteen dollars. Because she didn't, she was saying she wanted some leeway. She didn't want to start everybody at.
I know we did, I know we did the increase. The question I had, well, everybody was at thirteen, she could be at fifteen right now. Nobody was at fifteen right now.
Yeah.
And I think we voted to increase it to twenty.
Yes.
But then there was the question of, is there enough money if you do that?
Yeah.
So, we're done?
We're done.
That's assuming that twenty-two, two sixty is approved?
That was approved through, through my donation.
Thank you. Good work.
So that's paying for that hourly increase?
Yeah.
So is everybody clear on what we did? Because I think there was some confusion and I want to make sure that we're clarified. Bob, did you have any further, Sylvia? Just cautioning everybody. Mike? I'm just cautioning everybody when she runs out of money. What would you do if you ran out of money?
Call Bob.
No, call Bob.
Call Bob. Um, I would probably come to you for more money out of my donation fund.
Out of what fund?
The donation fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions. Pass the witness. Um, any other specific things that we have not addressed that somebody wants to address?
These, why are these stormwater things on the back, Vicky, that back page? We didn't approve those?
That's him. I thought we did.
I thought we did too.
I don't need nine-one-one. How about E nine-one-one?
We did, we did the salary stuff.
You approved, you know, the budget.
Right. We didn't, we didn't do anything with personnel? All right.
Okay.
If, if you want to just confirm that, that is what you'd like to do.
You guys see this request from the, uh, stormwater, development stormwater management, you see these requests? We got one from assistant county engineer, MS four program coordinator and administrative assistant. And there's, and there's a part-time, taking part-time to eighteen, or fifteen to eighteen. And then a project manager move entire salary from MVH to Kewen Bridge.
Those process, Peter, like fifteen or seventeen.
Director divide salary evenly between plan commission stormwater. So let's make this simple. Let's start with the, there's some requested, these are increase requests, are new people. These are new people that are asking for assistant county engineer, MS four program coordinator and administrative assistants.
This was non-general fund, right?
Yeah, but we just approved them.
I thought we approved, I thought we approved all of them.
Well, since psychobreathing is not necessarily etched in stone, is there anybody that has an issue with this or wants to make some sort of clarifying motion?
I'll motion that we accept them. I know we had discussion.
Second.
This motion is second, is any discussion?
Well, it's still taxpayer money.
Right you are, Sylvia. Right you are. Um, all those in favor of the three new positions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
You guys have it? Oh, yeah. Did we address, Vicky, the fifteen to eighteen an hour for part-time stormwater?
Where's the four?
The stormwater, did we address the fifteen to eighteen, a dollar an hour for part-time?
We didn't think that you approved any increase in wages.
Nobody's betting.
Fine. What do you guys want to do with stormwater part-time, fifteen to eighteen bucks an hour?
Make the motion.
Motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You against it?
Yeah.
What about the surcharge? And this is just hourly stuff back here.
Yeah, I forgot the E nine-one-one for a minute. Let's talk about this stormwater highway project manager, move entire salary from MVH to Kewen Bridge. Did we do that?
Wow.
I guess we did though.
Do you need a motion from us on that, Vicky? I know. What's your pleasure with the dividing of the entire salary?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Explain why we're doing that, Vicky. Are we running out of money?
Oh, God.
I think he was splitting time.
Between the two? It's all non-general fund, so it's just a question of how the money flows, but. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Department of Development's Stormwater Management Director divides salary evenly. Same thing. What's your pleasure?
Make the motion.
The motion and a second on the director dividing the salary. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Now, Vicky, from the auditor's standpoint, is there any other things you think we need to address?
What you just did just now.
Yeah.
Um, affecting stormwaters.
Yes.
Part of their division would have the money come from funds at eleven thirty-five. That's the bridge fund and it is part of our overall level. So we reworked their budget to increase the health insurance contribution. Can we take the health insurance just out of stormwater and plan commission, not having a part of the property?
Yes, yes, yes. You understand that? Yes, absolutely. Did we do nine-one-one? No. Did we do nine-one-one? I don't know if we did do E nine-one-one. All his requests? Yeah, what, uh?
Several, so, increase.
No, I don't think we did. I was just going to ignore it. Okay, I'm fine with that. You guys want to attack it? No, no, I'm fine. Does anybody want to address nine-one-one?
I think we should hear the pitch.
Anybody here for the pitch? Is that a wind-up?
I think he's.
This is, I mean, this is just an increase in our ability, right?
Uh, nine-one-one surcharge does not support the nine-one-one.
I thought it was getting hot, better though. Isn't that fun, getting a, a little bit healthier?
If we vote on this, I will vote no. The question is, what are you guys?
Sylvia, it's getting healthier because we've had a loss of salary because we have so many people that aren't working.
How much is that in there? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's pretty damn.
It is. And they haven't even switched over yet.
That's true. Their equipment is so expensive.
Dan, he's just, he's just been there a month. I think we just flatline it and, you know, give him a chance to get his feet underneath him.
So it's a motion?
Yeah, I'm with motion.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Joy, you can let the, uh, E nine-one-one, uh, director know that it didn't pass. Um, so, anything else, Vicky? Is there anything else you need from us in anticipation of the, other than the rates?
Do you think commissioners resolved on that salary position or whether?
Which one?
You were asking whether that was covered. Did you get that answered?
No, but, well, because, you know, if, if there's something, if, if, if we're mistaken, they'll, they'll get angry, but they're awesome. And then they'll come back to it. Bill Hollis. Um, any, anything else, Vicky? Anything unclear? Anything you think we haven't covered that you need us to cover, other than raises?
Again, um, commissioners, you're saying no to that.
Okay, clarify what you're asking. So the commissioners have made all kinds of requests. So I asked you earlier, have we approved something that reduced?
Yeah, and I, I honestly can't recall because of their changes that, that budget professionals, they were.
I, I don't know, but we have not addressed their.
They are asking for a new custodian.
Right, I know that.
But other than that, no, the only thing would be, um, the raises and to decide if anyone got a special raise, if they also get paid.
All right, so let's talk about that. So let's talk about raises.
Good point.
So.
Do you know how much we have left?
Yes, Vicky, how much we have left? Seven what?
Yes. Seven, seven twenty-one, five thirty-nine.
Three percent.
Ten in a final review.
And then, let me ask you, that, that includes the hundred thousand back from, for, to the general fund for health insurance?
Yes.
You're going to bring up here.
Now.
Well, we were talking to the truck, let me go up.
Yeah, we need a little wiggle room. I'm hopeful the recorder will come back and give us some wiggle room.
Good point.
Yeah. Um, so.
Looking for a motion?
I'm looking for some motions or suggestions or?
I have a motion to approve three percent raises.
We have a motion on the floor for three percent and a second. Vicky, tell us again what that hits.
Three percent across the board.
Yeah.
Seven hundred seven one sixty-eight. That includes the changes affecting third, three low.
Any discussion on that?
Now, would that include the people that we want to give raises to?
That's what we're getting ready to, I, I would suggest, I would suggest that, well, let's do it now. Yeah, it's part of discussion. So. I assume the probation is out because they're mandated. Yeah, the mandate. And the special raises we give. So probably the clean, now, Vicky, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me the cleanest way to do this is if we've given raises that are more than three percent, that's what they get. If we've given raises that are less than three percent, we give them three percent. All right, so just make it clean, because I don't, any other, that's, any other questions? Can I pull up the people under thirty thousand?
Yes.
Sure. We have ninety-two employees under thirty thousand a year. Am I reading that right? Um.
Okay, that included, um.
It was twenty-eight minus nine. Well, this said twenty-eight, but it included. I think nine is, nine is locked in officials.
What did it include?
Non-magistrates. Yeah, um, how many full-time employees we got under thirty thousand?
Full-time, not including the coroner.
Yep.
Nine.
Okay. So. We want to give them a little bit bigger bump than somebody at the top end of the food chain?
Well, where are their department heads?
I don't even know who they are.
That's my question.
Well, I, I don't, I don't.
Because everybody comes, I mean, Sheriff Brown says no problem asking for help for his employees. That's our department head's job, really.
I don't even know who they are. I just asked her to run the salaries. So, yeah, answer.
Um, commissioner, facility.
Uh, Vicky, I don't care who they are. I think it's embarrassing that we sit up here on a forty million dollar budget. We got people working for a good food stamps.
Well, I care who they are, because I think it's, what Jeff said.
Well, I, I don't, I.
Department's responsibility to comply with our requirements.
Okay, fine.
I'm, I'm not mad about the salary, Bob. I agree that the salary is ridiculous, but why aren't the department heads asking for those wage, you know, wages?
I don't know.
What is the responsibility?
I didn't, I didn't ask who they were. I just asked.
I did, I want to hear the rest.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. Who is it?
Hopefully think that they are, because, uh, several, several prosecutors, prosecutors for, and they're missing another one outside.
Uh, can you tell us, Vicky, are they at the highest end of the hourly rate that they could be given or is it, like, they could be given fifteen, but we're only giving fourteen or?
These are salaries.
These are salaries, dude.
These are salaries, not hourly.
She can make it hourly, yeah, but she can give you the math, but they're salaries.
Four D?
Yeah, I don't know.
How is that four D?
Four D, correct.
Must be.
Are requirements of salaries for, for doing the crap?
Four D, no. Four D. Yeah. Well.
How much money do we have left?
Well, we're right there, so we're right there.
Bob, I hear what you're saying, but I agree with you, yeah.
Well, I, I don't disagree with them, but do they fall through the cracks again? That's fine. Let me, let me, no, but let me just say this. You've, you've sent, you've sent a message, you've sent out the signal, Bob. If, if the, if there's some great concern by the department heads, they're just going to have to come back to us. But I mean, the fact of the matter is, we just painfully squeezed money out of all these budgets to get a three percent raise. And. I'm not saying not to do that. Right. I'm just saying it seems like whenever we do the percentage and I said it for the last, I don't know, decade, the gap just keeps getting bigger. The people at the top get more, the people in the middle and the bottom get less. Okay, that's what we want to do. I'm fine. Give them something. I had, Vicky, run graduated scales based on salary range. The ones at the bottom of the pay scale get a little bigger increase if we go, you know, with these percentages, then we only get, maybe, I don't know what other numbers are, it's on the funny.
So can we get the motion on the three percent and then look at the lower wages or are you just done with wages?
I, I think if we approve this three percent, we're done with wages, because we are right there. Mm-hmm. We're right there. We're banking on a pretty decent health insurance year. We're banking on a pretty decent investment year. We're, we're, which is there. We're good, we're solid. I just don't think we should go anymore.
I think as, as we look at three percent, knowing the last two years, we're, we had a four percent increase, which we're pretty proud of. The last several years, I think we've made some pretty good progress too in terms of aligning, uh, pay and salaries to what the job descriptions, uh, outline, which is really what, uh, the salary and where you should be tied to. And we're not there yet, and I think we all agree, we wish everybody would make or could make more money, but there's a limit. And if you look at the cost of living, in eighteen it was two percent, and nineteen it's two point eight percent. And if we're able to give three percent to, uh, the county employees, I think that would be a, that would be a victory.
I would agree. I would agree. I think it would be.
We have a couple of people coming back, uh, Thursday, the, was it?
Yeah, but she needs numbers tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we got a.
Okay.
So. I'm not going, I'm not going to beat, run too much more, but I'm probably going to vote no on this, because I, flat raises are not fair. No, that doesn't mean.
It's percentages.
Flat percentages are not fair, that's all. I mean, I don't know that not fair is the answer, or is accurate. I, I, yeah, I understand, not equal, but I understand, and I understand your perspective on this, Bob, but there is another side of that coin. That in theory, the higher you move up, the, you know, more responsibility you get. And so maybe separation of the ranks, for lack of a better term, isn't necessarily a bad thing. It incentivizes the move up. But also, a, a, a flat percentage increases that gap every year. It does. It does. I mean, are we, are we, we can't, you know, I mean, it's a little embarrassing to see that we got people under thirty thousand a year, that's all. Okay, can we get a roll call on this, please?